Call the meeting to order. Ms. Schallerworth, can I get a motion that we come on a closed session? All in favor? All opposed? Ms. Schallerworth.
Mr. Thorpe?
Yes.
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 At this time, we will, good evening, we will stand in flagellation and in moment of silence. Flagellating.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I would like to make a motion that Mr. Bullock be removed as Vice Chairman of the Board for unprofessional behavior.
Second. Oh, after a discussion on that?
At the recent State Board, we had a regional meeting, and Mr. Bullock got up in front of the regional members and discussed our board's, I guess, problems in this meeting, to the point that all the school board members came up to me, said they were uncomfortable, read to walk out, and one principal said that she was embarrassed.
Okay. You know, remember any questions, comments on that? Ms. Garner, we will organize next month, and as Regional Chair at that meeting, what I stated, and I was talking to all the boards, we have eight school divisions and region eight, I stated that the school board members need to take politics out of the boardroom and concentrate on what our students need and not what we need. And that was my conversation, that we need to take the politics out of the school board, and that we need to work towards helping our children and not be trying to get reelected. I wasn't talking about any particular board, but I was talking with all the members there. Thank you.
Can I speak?
Yes, sir.
I apologize, excuse me, Mr. Thornton, just a second. I apologize, board members for being late. Mr. Bullock, I've got one more item to add to that agenda.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to terminate Dr. Thornton with cause immediately. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
No, you don't need a discussion.
Because we voted on this, Mr. Preier, and...
We voted with cause, sir. Without cause, I mean, this is with cause.
Well, you had a failed attempt to do that last... Let me finish, Mr. Preier.
Yes, sir, but like I said, that was a different motion. This motion is with cause, and I think I have a motion, and I think I have a second, so I think it's either time to vote, or let's move on with the program.
Well, Mr. Preier, we took a vote last month.
We took a vote.
Now, I'm not going to talk now.
Yes, sir, I'm talking now, too. Yes, sir, and I've let you talk for a few years now, but what I'm saying, this is a different motion. I've sat in a chair, I've gone through the training, I've talked to the lawyers, this is a different motion. This is a motion with cause, to terminate immediately. I have a motion, and I have a second. You need to call for a vote.
He was not here. His agenda was already...
Mr. Chairman, you want to call for a vote?
I'm not going to call for a vote, because you should have been here when we adopted the agenda, and we're not going to adopt an agenda at this point.
I'm sorry, some of us have a real job, and I have to work. But anyway.
Okay.
Anyway, I have a motion and a second, so do we not?
There's two motions on the floor at this time.
Okay. I'm sure he's going to take hers off.
The agenda has been approved.
Yeah, I'm going to give it in. The, as far as, we're going to vote on what she had said.
I think this is a majority rule for Dr. Thornton. I know you're saying it's not going to be a good, I've known him as Chair right there for, what, five years, four and a half years? Whole lot of things been added to the agenda the night before, after it was started, a whole lot of things I haven't voted on. And I've made a motion, and I have a second. The last time I checked, this is a majority rule. So, according to...
The, Mr. Preier, we adopted the agenda beginning of the meeting prior to you coming in, and we're not going to entertain in addition.
I make a motion for a five-minute recess while our chairman call our attorney.
You know, it seems like we go... I'm not going to change the agenda, and at this time, we're going to proceed with the meeting.
I guess the question is, are we going to entertain Dora Garner's motion and second? If we do, if we do, then it will be an opportunity to determine later whether or not it was a valid vote or not. We do have two motions. Both motions have been seconded.
But the second motion was improper motion, because the motion was already on the floor prior to that.
No, no, sir, it wasn't. It was a separate motion.
Let's vote on Ms. Garner's.
We have to do one at a time.
Good afternoon, Speaker. First of all, you can't vote on Ms. Garner's motion either, because that's changing the agenda, and you can reorganize one time a year, which is in January. You can have a vote of no confidence for Mr. Bullock, which means nothing more than you don't have confidence in him, but you cannot remove him from Chair. You can do that in January, one time a year.
That is an opinion of you, Dr. Thornton, not our legal counsel. Mr. Preier...
Actually, I asked our legal counsel that very question, and that is the answer he gave me.
So, we have two people that are saying two different things from legal counsel. I think Mr. Edwards' opinion is valid. Call the attorney. The attorney can give an opinion, a legal opinion, that's why we pay them, and if the attorney advises that we can or cannot, then that's the opinion we have to go by.
And right now, Mr. Sturdivan, you have a Chairman of the Board who runs this meeting, and he's running the meeting by Robert's Rules of Order and what you can and cannot do.
We close the meeting.
Yep.
It appears that...
Sir, you can walk out of the meeting.
It takes more than five to run a meeting.
No, actually, I think, Mr. Bullock, you have to entertain...
Well, let me make a statement, Mr. Sturdivan. It seems like every month, this board have to go through what I was talking about at the regional meeting, politics. This is all that is, politics. And we need to get away from the politics. Now, it appears that all this has been gingers up between the three.
Excuse me.
You know, it appears.
You may talk to other people. I do not talk. I was sitting in that meeting and heard you. All the board members were in there.
At this time, we're going to call a recess, ten-minute recess.
So, if you want to discuss it, you go ahead and discuss it.
Let's go down to run. Back to order. As I previously stated, those two motions was out of order. We just talked to the attorney, and he was out of order, and at this time, I let Mrs. Sturdivan, he's our parliamentarian, state what attorney said.
I'm talking to Mr. Craig Wood. Mr. Wood said that in order to add those items, they have to be brought on when the agenda is made. So, if at the beginning of the meeting had both those motions been made, it could have been added to the agenda, but because the majority of the vote, the board has already voted on the agenda, the motion of removal of Mr. Bullock cannot be made. The motion of the removal of the superintendent with cause, without cause, or with cause cannot be made. That has to be added at the very beginning. The board can make a motion to, in regards to Mr. Bullock...
A no-confidence vote.
A no-confidence vote. So, if the board chooses to, Ms. Garner, you can make a motion of no confidence that does not remove Mr. Bullock from the seat, but it's just a motion of the board with their approval of Mr. Bullock.
How can you make a motion? If you can't make one motion, how can you make another motion?
I don't know.
No, she can make that next meeting.
In January.
But we can't make a...
He won't be the Chairman, he won't be the...
We can't...
The House Chairman then, either.
We can't make a motion of substance after the agenda has been voted on.
Been adopted. At this time, we proceed with the meeting. Senior of the Month.
First senior of the month is Antonio Patterson from Parkview High School. Antonio Patterson, yes? How are you? Congratulations. Antonio Patterson is the Parkview High School Senior of the Month. He is the son of Latina Patterson of South Hill. Antonio comes from a large family and spends a lot of time with his grandmother, Mrs. Corinne Goud. Antonio is an active member at Southside Baptist Church in La Crosse, and serves as Treasurer of the youth group. He has served as a speaker for the Christmas program and volunteered for numerous other assignments within the ministry. Antonio has achieved high levels of academic and extracurricular success at Parkview. Antonio has been a member of the Beta Club and was elected to leadership offices in FBLA and SGA. He enjoys sports and has been a member of the football and track teams. As a 10th grader, he visited United Tiger Martial Arts, and this has been his passion and physical outlet. Antonio gave up playing sports to focus on his martial arts activity. Has, he has earned a purple belt and works part-time as an assistant instructor in the martial arts classes. He instructs younger students who range between the ages four and 14, and believes martial arts builds character and confidence. Mrs. Tiffany Lynch was Antonio's English teacher last year. She said he was an amazing student to have in the classroom. His work ethic and his morals are far beyond those of many of the students his age. He has high hopes and dreams and works hard to see those things come to be a reality. I can think of no better candidate for this honor. Antonio said his goal in life is, quote, "to help people do better because I hate to see people suffering." Antonio, in collaboration with his research team, is working on his governor's school project, which aims to find a more efficient way to filter dirty and contaminated water for potable usage. This work could help people in the developing world have access to clean water. Enrolled in the SVCC Dual Enrollment Program, Antonio will graduate with his associate's degree in May 2015. He has been to the Liberty University campus for church events and plans to take a formal tour of the campus during Christmas break. Antonio intends to major in business and minor in biblical studies. He would like to run his own business and possibly become a youth pastor in the future. Congratulations. Our next Senior of the Month is Katherine Marie Hughes from Bluestone High School. Congratulations. Katherine Marie Hughes is a Bluestone High School's December Senior of the Month. Katherine is the daughter of John and Sarah Hughes and resides in Chase City, Virginia. She is a polite and courteous student who is always eager to please. Mrs. Tanya Jones, an English teacher at Bluestone High School, states Katherine Hughes makes a great Senior of the Month candidate. Katherine is well-mannered. She is a hard worker. Katherine is an absolute joy to teach. She goes above and beyond to grasp a concept. She is an avid reader. She is a competitive athlete who participates in cross-country and soccer. She plays the clarinet for the Bluestone High School band. Katherine is a dream student. When I think of Katherine, this quote applies, "The difference between ordinary and extraordinary is that little extra." Katherine always gives that little extra in every task she does. Even though English is her favorite subject, Katherine is a strong problem solver and works well in groups. She thrives in a team environment, as her classmates are always glad to have her in her group, in their group. Katherine is a very soft-spoken, but impressive in her words. Katherine has been accepted to Lynchburg College and plans to major in physical therapy. She is excited for her new adventure, but will miss Bluestone High School. We are proud of Katherine Marie Hughes' accomplishments and honored to have her as Bluestone High School's December Senior of the Month. Congratulations.
Clarksville Elementary.
Good morning. My name is Jackson. And we're going to talk about a project called "Brokein First the Chicken or the Egg." It's a loving project, and all four second grade classes are included. We would like to show some of the stuff we have been doing with our chickens. We don't have time to show all, but we'll show some of them. And I would like to introduce the Andrew Watson.
Hello. Hello, my name is Andrew Watson. I will be talking about the incubator. The incubator has to be 99.5 degrees for the chickens to stay warm, and you have to put the, put an X on one side of the egg and an O on the other side. If the O is on top of the egg, that shows that you have turned the egg. And now, I'd like to introduce Faith.
This is my name, and I would like to tell you about how to turn an egg. First, you need a flashlight. Then, you get ready for your eggs. To make it fertilized, you turn the flashlight on and put the egg on top where the flashlight is showing. You fill it with water at first, and the second time you set it with the egg, there should be a bigger dot. And there are 14 eggs that hatch altogether. On 21st day, the chickens will hatch. It takes five to six hours for chickens to hatch. And I would like to introduce Chelsea Simon.
Hello, my name is Chelsea Simon, and this is Moses. I will be talking to you about today, about the brooder and the chicken chat journal. And once we got the brooder in our classroom, we put the heat lamp on it, and we gave them food and water, and the chickens, we wrote research, we searched, we searches about the chickens, and we wrote, and we wrote in our chicken chat journals, and see if there was a girl and a boy, and, um, and we wrote observations about it. And now, I'd like to introduce Jayvon.
Hello, my name is Jayvon Anderson, and this is Brandy Richardson. We're going to talk to you about what, about our final designs and our, and our first designs. Another thing we did with, another thing we did was, we researched what we would need to have in chicken coop. We, we made rock traps, and we critique each other's designs, and gave kind, specific, and helpful ideas on how they could improve their designs. Then, we made our final designs. Some of them were creative ideas. Who knows? Maybe one of us will grow up and become an architect. Now, I'd like to introduce Turn Burnett.
Hello, my name is Turn Burnett, and our chickens are laying on the outside. We like to visit them at recess, and make sure they have enough feed and water, and we like to feed them mealworms, and we're going to sell some of their roosters so we can buy more food, and we hope they spawn that the eggs that lay eggs, and we even sell some of the eggs so we have some more money to buy more food. And we're going to take another field study at Everly Branch Farms, and I would like to introduce you to Haley Bowen.
Hello, my name is Haley Bowen, and we learned a lot this year about chickens. Did you know that a chicken is related to a Chinese source Rex? Did you know that if you eat an egg at dinner, it gets smarter? We're chicken experts. If you'd like to know anything else about chickens, ask one of us. Now, I would like to introduce Adrian.
Hello, my name is Adrian. These two are extra special sponsors. Sherry Sun, Home Depot, Walmart, Central Insurance, Larry Wright, Local Services, Nancy Terry, Ace Hall, DonorsChoose.org, and in our classroom, Edward Baptist Church, R.A., and I'm Dr. Jackson.
We would like to show the most exciting part of our project, watching from below of our chickens hatching.
Okay, Brandon, Brandon, I left out, so Brandon wants to do a little thing. We skipped over her.
Here is the roosting pole, and a dropping tray, and a flat, and the nesting axes, and the stairs. And we would like, we would like to go and visit also our chickens at Platoon Elementary School. But we would like to take you on the tour. Thank you.
I have a question.
I'm going to take a...
I have a question. Where are you going to keep your chickens over Christmas break or when it turns cold?
Um, we're going to keep our chicken coop. Okay, thank you.
I have a question. I just wanted you to know that my daughter is an animal and poultry science major. She just started at Virginia Tech, and she just learned how to tell if an egg is fertilized or not by using that light. So, you're learning what my daughter is learning at Virginia Tech. What about that? I want to recognize the teachers, because that I want to recognize, but these teachers have worked really hard as a team, the second-grade teachers at Clarksville. They applied for two grants, one from Ag and Classroom, and they were awarded the grant, and they also applied for DonorsChoose.org and got both of those things. And these kids love this project, and they're still going to carry it on throughout the year, and they really have a beautiful coop that is lit and has food and water, and one of the teachers lives really close, and she checks on them on weekends and holidays. So, they did a great job. Good job, kids.
I'd like to take five minutes, let me show the choice of the student's hand.
I would, if, when these chickens start having eggs to sell, I would like to buy the first dozen, because you said it makes people smarter, and I have a place for those.
Next on the agenda, Ms. Tuck.
Good evening, school board liaison, school board members, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Thornton. As you all are aware, we are in the midst of planning our five-year strategic plan, and in order to do so, one of the things that we wanted to do was to get some information out there and to get feedback from the community. This is just one of our ways. We plan to do town hall meetings as well, and, and talk to the staff, and continue the talks with PTA and different members of the community. So, I just wanted to let you know some of the things that we've been doing. On here are our different informational brochures. As of today, we have sent something out about the integrated fine arts curriculum, about teacher pay, and about STEM and CTE, with each of those as a flyer. In this PowerPoint, these are hyperlinks that will take you to the brochures as well as to the survey. In order to get this information out to the public, we have approached this in many different ways. On all of the websites, including each school and the main division website, under the Parents' Corner, you can see that we have put a place for the flyers, for the survey. This is an email that was sent out to parents by our principals, different principals are, the principals are sending out the information, our Facebook page, and even on my big campus on Dr. Thornton's blog. This is a sampling of one of the surveys. We try to keep them really short, to about four or five questions. We've also asked that people identify themselves in one way, whether they are a student, because even students can take this, a parent of either an elementary-age student or a secondary student, an MCPS educator, or a community member. And then, we also, on every single one of the surveys, we allow for any comments to be made. This is some of the sampling of our surveys, and the surveys will be open until December 31st, so this is not the true data. This is just capturing it one day. And as you can see in this, we've got some strong opinions. We've also had some good participation. We're up to, actually, about 250 people have responded to one of our surveys, so we're getting the message out there and we're collecting the data. Some of the comments in just the survey have been different things, like teachers and parapros do not get paid nearly enough for what they do. I have noticed the amount of turnover in this county, and I do believe the lower salary. We understand that our teachers are superheroes. They've been dressed apart some days, but they certainly do. And I love this comment, if we want to rank among the best counties in the state, then teachers need to be paid like they are the best in the state. Our integrated arts survey, we're asking hard questions, such as if you want an integrated arts curriculum at the elementary school. It has the two schools that are doing that as a pilot. It has the two schools that are doing that as a pilot this year. They're having to start school earlier. So that was one of the questions that we asked. And you can see that people have their opinions and they go from one being strongly disagree and a five is a strongly agree. So, you know, we're taking that information out there and it continues to change each day. You can see that they do want the integrated arts, but how much are we willing to do it? Are we willing to start school earlier? Those are things that we need to study and ask the public and see what they want. Some of the comments that they've made is, you know, the day is currently too long for the elementary students. They feel that it is important, but maybe they're just too exhausted. As a parent, I want my child to have the same opportunities that children at other schools in the county already have. And this is in reference to the fact that we've got this going on at Chase City and at La Crosse. How can we make sure that we have this at all of our schools? So this is just a sampling of some of the information that we have put out there and we will continue to put this information out there. And we will also share this information once we have disaggregated it. Do you have any questions?
Yes. Who made the strategic plan?
The strategic plan was created by a joint effort. We certainly all, the administrative team, put efforts into it. But then we also went to community meetings to get information and feedback over the past two years, I believe. We went to PTA meetings and got feedback from there. And then the Administrative Executive Committee put it together. It is not finalized. It's still in its draft form.
Okay, so the entire administrative team put together this template for our strategic plan?
Well, no, not the entire group, by no means. But different people have put things in there. Did I help organize it? Yes. And other people as well.
We also had Mr. started in student advisory groups and at every single school and parent advisory group add input into it as well.
Any other questions? Thank you.
As we talked, at another board meeting, part of the strategic plan is to support, recruit, and retain quality teachers. We were very fortunate to hire a dynamic group of new teachers over the summer and are passionate and are resolved to support and retain them. Part of our support is professional development. This summer in our new teacher week, we had two and a half days of Odyssey training. Two and a half days of Odyssey training, which focused on curriculum and project development. We had one day of classroom management training, which was also offered during that first week. We followed up in October to talk about classroom management, what kind of issues, and discuss their concerns, because this typically is one of the areas that new teachers struggle with. In November, we offered school-based professional development to focus on aligning curriculum and assessments to the standards of learning. Pathwise mentors, that's a program that we have incorporated for our new teachers that have zero years of experience. The goals of this program are to acclimate teachers to Mecklenburg County Public Schools, help them to know what our available resources are, and to know the student demographics. It is also a time for mentor teachers to observe the new teacher and provide nonevalutive feedback. The nonevalutive feedback is very important. It also helps them to focus on areas where they need improvement. It's a time for the new teachers to observe effective veteran teachers and reflect on their own classroom and to focus on how students work, how student work is used to drive classroom instruction. And this is a year-long program. For teachers who are new to Mecklenburg County Public Schools that come with experience, we also pair them up with a building-level mentor. This is an effective educator who provides support in curriculum and resources. And they also provide support in the procedures and routines that we use at the building level as well as at the district level. They're also a go-to person just for questions, concerns, and just be able to vent and talk about what they need to do to make their classroom better. The next thing that we feel like is important to support new teachers is networking. New teachers come to Mecklenburg County and oftentimes are isolated. So we felt it's important to help them network. One of our first initiatives, thankfully, is offered by the Mecklenburg County Business Education Partnership that sponsors a new teacher dinner where they partner a new teacher with a community member or a business member and help them get acquainted with our community. In September, we had a picnic to kick off the monthly roundtable meetings. This is a new initiative this year. Every month, we get the elementary and the secondary teachers together to have a roundtable discussion to talk about topics of interest like classroom management, teacher evaluation, data analysis, and things like that. And that's been very effective. They can ask questions, feel free to talk about things that are going on in their classroom. Also, it's a time to just kind of get to know other teachers. The single most important factor in student learning is an effective educator. So we have a system of teacher, systematic teacher evaluation system. And the goal of our teacher evaluation system is to support continuous growth and development of each teacher and provide meaningful feedback. Each new teacher will receive a minimum of six observations and a focus on teacher improvement. Observations are completed by principals, assistant principals, coordinators, and coaches. In November, we provided a survey so that we can find out how new teachers are feeling supported and are they getting their observations and are they getting timely feedback. Of the new teachers, eighty-three percent have been observed an average of three point two times. And of those teachers that were observed, ninety-one percent said they were provided timely feedback. We sent a survey out in December to find out areas that they feel supported in and areas where they feel like they need more support in. Kind of overall, the new teachers said they felt very supported by their colleagues, their principals, their administrators, and the division as a whole. So they were, they really didn't have anything negative to say in terms of support. So they were really very positive. The areas where they felt like they needed more support were classroom management, organization, helping with SOLs, writing lesson plans, and having time to collaborate with other teachers at different grade levels and throughout the division. We are committed to supporting our new teachers and encourage ongoing feedback to ensure this happens. Y'all have any questions? Thank you.
Next thing on the agenda is quartet math, Dr. Thornton. Technology, Mr. Gregory.
Good evening, school board members, Dr. Thornton, student liaisons. On behalf of the technology department, I would like to present a high-level overview of some of the things we have going on in technology across the division. It's very high-level and shares just some of the things that we're doing. We have a lot going on all the time, but wanted to share some of these things. The technology department's worked very hard over the past year to integrate closely with the instructional department. We no longer function in isolation. Technology is a resource and a tool for instruction. So we've worked very close with the instructional team to make sure that we are meeting instructional needs and not just putting devices out across our division. Technology changes rapidly. I'm sure this was out of date before I even put it on here, but I just wanted to give you a feel for how quickly technology changes. For example, five hundred and seventy-one new websites are created in sixty seconds. Seventy new domains are added to the internet every sixty seconds. One point eight million Facebook likes happen in one point, or in sixty seconds. So we try to put scalable systems in place that we can grow and very quickly and adapt to whatever instructional needs come about. And we try to make sure that we're flexible and scalable so we can grow as needed and change as needed. These are a few of the applications that we support more frequently. You may hear things like we're doing blended learning while our little penguin friend down here is ST math. That's an example of blended learning, what we're doing in some elementary classrooms. What that means is that the teacher teaches and then the student also spends time on the computer, so they're getting a blended environment. We have iReady down here, which is a personalized learning program. You may hear that come up from time to time. Personalized learning means that the program automatically adapts to where the student is. So if the student engages where the student is instructionally, and then we'll adjust up or down to make sure that the student is getting exactly what they need. Our learning management system is Mobi Campus, and we'll talk about a couple of these a little more in depth. Google Apps for Education, we're huge Google customers, our users. It's free to education customers, so it's a great resource for our division. We have a lot of devices across the division. We support a lot of iPads, laptops. Desktops are starting to phase out. In more recent, we're getting into Chromebooks because they're a cheaper, more affordable solution. Mobi Campus, the LMS that we were talking about, teachers are using that to flip their classroom. They're able to post lessons on the internet, or on the website on the internet. They're able to post Word documents and files. One of our teachers recently won an award, Mrs. Parrish, for flipping her research project. All of her students were posting their information on Mobi Campus. So all their resources were online and available from anywhere. YouTube, we have a lot of students that are using YouTube now. It's really cool. I've been in several classrooms that are using YouTube to really connect with literature. I've seen it a lot at the high school where they're able to reenact some of the, we've seen Beowulf and some of the others, the students are really able to connect with that and reenact or put their spin on what they think, what the literature means to them. They're also using it to connect with external audiences. We've seen a lot of YouTube videos in here that the students are sharing to get that external audience. We still have your traditional technology. We're still using desktop apps. We still have digital cameras, so students are still exposed to those as well. Google Hangouts, like I said, the Google App Suite is really powerful and free. We have students that are able to connect with students across the organization. So students from Chase City are doing math problems with students at South Hill. They're able to connect with students across the state. We had a geography Google Hangout where you had to give examples or a description of where you were and students had to guess or use a map to identify where the students were on the other side. Google Docs is a really powerful tool. It allows you the ability to get instant feedback and collaborate. So here we have an example where the students are writing a paper and the teacher was making comments about how to improve their writing. Really powerful tool. Google Sheets, another powerful tool. It's very, all these tools are collaborative, so there's instant feedback. You and I can work on it together. Anybody that has access to Google can work on it together. The teacher can give instant feedback and it's a really great tool. Google has a custom search so that we're able to, from a very young age, customize what students have access to. So for example, the Circle of Life Project where they were studying habitats, we could create a site for the students where they're limited to certain valid sites and we can teach them how to use that without them being exposed to the entire internet from a young age. And then it has research tools built in so that if you need to grab that MLA format or some of those other things, it's available for the higher-level students as well. And teaching them search techniques, we have the ability to teach students about digital citizenship. We don't want just students to just hop on the internet and have, you know, access to whatever. We talk about what quality sites are. We talk about safe searches and really concentrate on all the aspects of digital citizenship. Facebook, we do a lot of, lot of Facebook. When you, like the students you saw today, who get extremely excited about their learning and what they're doing, they want that audience beyond the classroom. When they're just sitting in the classroom showing their peers, it doesn't mean quite as much. So we've used Facebooks to help students connect with audiences outside their classroom and they, just watching the likes and seeing the people that are making comments about their work just gets them super excited about learning. And teachers are using the same tools that they're asking their students to use. Those same comments and collaborative tools that we were talking about earlier, teachers are using the same thing to do their lesson plans. We have monthly collegial conversations. Some of the feedback that we received from teachers is that they like to have the opportunity to talk together. So, you know, instead of having to drive across the county to put people together, we can now, you know, start a Google Hangout and we can talk to teachers around the county. And we can also connect to external resources. We had Mr. Ron Berger on a call with some of our teachers. It also, they have what's called Google Communities. So we're able to create interactive websites where it's kind of like the Mobi Campus LMS and use it for teachers. We held some online professional development last year using this tool. We'll hold an online book study for teachers here coming up in a few weeks using this tool. And we're constantly changing as we try to meet the demands of our instructional needs. We're constantly adding more equipment. We're fixing and updating cores. We're constantly changing. Our wireless usage is really high. At any given time, we have about 2,000 students bringing in devices, getting on wireless. So it's a huge demand. And I see Mr. Ellis out here in the audience. I want to give him some credit. You know, when we talk about the amount of devices we have and the amount of infrastructure that we have to change continuously, there's no way that we can do that ourselves. So we enlisted the help of the CST programs and created a program where our CST students can get Dell certification, industry certification, real-world experience, and they're helping us repair our desktops, laptops, swapping out screens, keyboards. So not only are they leaving with real-world experience, they're leaving with an industry certification. Questions? We have instructional or just technical?
Technical.
Five.
Okay, is that enough?
The recommendation from the state is one per thousand.
Are we above that?
If you don't count me.
So we are above it, counting you?
Yeah.
Thanks.
They unlock the doors at the school until, each school, I think, had the ability to set their own time. I think some of the schools are at four o'clock. Most of the schools are at four o'clock, so they give students the time to get out of the building. I think we adjusted some to 3:45 based on principal request. So we have the flexibility to adjust the student times and we've done that. I can't tell you what all of them are off the top of my head. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, school board members, school liaison, and Dr. Thornton. I'm here to present the December 2014 Chow Count. We do this every year. This is a funding year, so our numbers are very important. I've picked five data points for you. The first one is the count by school. Very little changes, very little fluctuation. We're down sixteen students from last year. And these numbers do fluctuate after December 1st. We can fluctuate anywhere from up to twenty to thirty students throughout the school year. We get a lot of transfer students in on January. The next one is the count by disabilities. This fluctuates very little also, and this represents only the primary disabilities. Students may have up to three disabilities. The count by race, we're currently at fifty-seven percent special education students who are black and forty percent who are white. This has fluctuated very little throughout the year. We usually stay about those numbers, plus or minus three points. The next one, this is the one that fluctuates the most within the last ten years. This is a count of the percentage of the students who are being educated in the general education classroom. We have eighty to a hundred percent, and this is less than eighty minutes outside of the general ed classroom. We have forty to seventy-nine percent, and then we have one to thirty-nine percent. And ten years ago, we were at eighty-five percent of special education students who were receiving their services in resource classrooms. That's outside the general ed population. Six years ago, we were at about fifty percent within the resource rooms, fifty percent in general ed. Within the last four or five years, we've gone up to seventy-five percent of our students being educated. Within the last four or five years, we've gone up to 75% of our students being educated in the general ed classroom and collaborative classrooms. Huge, huge increase. Ten years ago, these numbers were switched the opposite, it was more like 400 in resource rooms, and then 100 in general population. The count of percentage by services, students can receive anywhere from 1 to 100% of special education services via the IEP. Most of our students receive 50% or less services, and you have to remember that the percentage of services does not have anything to do with placement. You can have a student that is receiving 100% services and be 100% of the time in the general ed population, no resource room at all. A lot of the 100% have one-to-one aids, and some of the 51 to 100% could be collaborative services. Any questions?
Yes. You talked about the resource class.
Yes.
If I remember the resource classes when I was teaching, the student would go, and the teacher would have several students, and they would be going over different subjects in this resource. Is that the type of resource you're talking about, or are you talking about a resource teacher that concentrates in one subject?
One subject. Now, it could be one or two. Most of our resource services are in the math and language arts. That's where our students are the weakest. We do have more pull-out for language arts and math than we do for social studies and science. A lot of our students, I would say close to 90% of our students, are out in the collaborative services for science and social studies. We still have a few resource classes that deal with math and sci, math and language arts. Twenty years ago, when I came into the system, I taught science, social studies, math, and English. We don't have that anymore. Any questions?
Dr. Thornton? Cortez Math.
The Cortez Math Report, we're gonna try to be as transparent as we can, and really call it the good, bad, and ugly. And I do want to say, though, we did get off to a bumpy start before I go through this whole report, and say that the majority of our teachers are working very diligently, they've given up planning periods, they've given up after-school time to make sure our students get through the Cortez curriculum, and are at benchmark in that curriculum. The Cortez Math Program results in our division four years ago. Cortez Core Program can remediate students, it can accelerate students, and it can provide the full curriculum for students at all the grade levels, actually, three through high school, and it is approved by the Virginia Department of Education. In 2010-11, we put the Core Program in 7th grade in both middle schools, and it was put in there at that time because we wanted to accelerate students through Algebra I and middle school if possible, and get them to higher-level math, and get them ready for advanced diplomas, et cetera. And the results of that year were, we had 194 students at Parkview Middle School, 7th graders who actually took the Math 8 SRL with an 81% pass rate. Six 7th graders assigned to Math 8 accelerated to Algebra and passed the Algebra 1 SRL with 100% pass rate. At Bluestone Middle School, had similar results, 142 7th graders took the Math 8 SRL with a 75% pass rate. 16 actually accelerated and all passed Algebra, and one actually finished 7th, 8th grade, Algebra I and Geometry in one school year, and passed the Geometry SRL. The program did what we wanted, students completed 7th and 8th grade with great success, and quite a few finished Algebra I. The reason for change was the budget. We were cut a million dollars in that year, as we were preparing for the next year, and that was the year after we were cut $4 million. And so we had a lot of challenges and a lot of things to look at. Cortez has instructional assistants that are paid through the Cortez budget, so they actually work for Cortez, so instead of working for us, we pay Cortez for them to work with the program. The goal was to find a similar program with similar results and reduce the cost if possible. And a team was put together, and they chose I Can Learn Math. The results that I've highlighted in red up on your screen are the middle school results from the year we had Cortez in middle school, and then the next year was I Can Learn in the middle school. And you see the considerable drop. Also, you see the high schools in black, and you see the huge drop. And to be fair, that is the year of the new math test, and so we had a considerable drop with the new SRL. In subsequent years, we have had continued problems with our math SOLs, as you are aware, and in the high school, all those classes are taught the traditional method. So we began researching last spring, and trying to find answers what to do. I Can Learn was not working in the middle school, high school scores were not improving, being taught with traditional methods. Students were coming to the high school failing one or more SOLs in middle school and had significant gaps. So to ask high school teachers to fill in all of those gaps and teach to a new rigorous, new SRL, well, it was really almost an impossible task to ask of them. So we researched supplemental programs that could assist teachers to fill these gaps, and ensure that our students could earn a verified credit. The importance in high school is these students have to earn the verified credit in Algebra and Geometry in order to graduate from high school. So, once they get to high school, this is truly high stakes for the students. And students who had previously had success in math and passed their SOLs, the discussion was to put them in a regular traditional class like they've been in the past. We again looked at Cortez Math Supplemental Program, because in 2012-13, Cortez created a supplemental program to improve SRL results. This program did not require as many lab administrators. This program was piloted in Petersburg City Public Schools and Southampton County Public Schools. The students were assigned a course consisting of 40 lessons, and it reviewed the basic skills, and then gave them practice on these new rigorous SOLs. And the results in those schools were, on the bottom as you see, all in the 90 percentile, so very successful. We then decided to visit Southampton in the spring of last year, to see how the program was implemented, and talked to teachers, students, and the principal. And teachers were invited to this visit, Bluestone High School teachers attended. Principal at Southampton stated that she did not know the program, but her superintendent has used the program in another division, and she had to do something with her low scores. We were told that some teachers in Southampton were not happy that a computer would teach 40% of the curriculum, but they implemented the program with fidelity. And with fidelity means they finish all of the objectives on the computer part of the program. Southampton had scores in the 40s, and benchmarks did not look good, so they put this program in immediately. They put this program in the middle of a school year, and there was no buy-in, they didn't ask what anyone thought, they made the decision on data, not opinion. We all have opinions, but data does not lie, and Southampton is now accredited in math. We had teachers who were concerned, just like Southampton teachers, and basically anywhere this program has been implemented, and they had concerns about, again, a computer teaching part of what they should be teaching. But if you go back to what I said at the beginning, these students we're talking about had gaps, one or two years where they failed SOLs, and we need something to help supplement and help our teachers along with teaching these SOLs as well. Principals were given the choice, they were told that if they could find another research-based option for math and demonstrate that, and they wanted to use it in the building, they could do so. No one came forward and did so, the principals chose to move forward with Cortez. The middle school chose to use the Core Program in 8th grade due to low scores for two consecutive years, and a large gap in math for the students who had failed in both 6th and 7th grade. And I'll explain the different programs under Cortez. The Core is what we've had previously in 7th grade. Middle school chose TRACK, which is 60% teacher, 40% computer, for 6th and 7th grade, and some of this was budget-driven, and we had some discussion about using Core, but the Core requires more personnel. High schools chose TRACK for Algebra I and Geometry, again, that's 60% teacher and 40% computer. And Bluestone High School chose the PASS program for Algebra II, and Parkview High School chose not to use the PASS program. What the Core Program is, it has a lab administrator or an instructional aide assigned from Cortez to the teacher, and the teacher does small group breakout lessons throughout the week with different groups. So basically, the lab administrator is in there with the students, and the teacher's able to take small groups of students out and teach in that small group setting. And they're required to teach all of the standards, the teacher teaches 100% of the SOLs, and the students complete 100% on the Core Program. The TRACK is a compromise, it has the teacher teach 60% of the material, and the computer covers the other 40% of the material. The teacher can still cover some of the 40% if they feel they need to, but Cortez, with their data, says this is not necessary to do, that the computer teaches that 40% satisfactory. Teachers in this format teach three days a week, which equates to 60% of the time, and students are in the lab two days a week for the whole period, which is 40% of the time. The PASS program has 30 lessons that are aligned with rigor of the new standards. This is designed for students who had success in math previously. Teachers teach the curriculum, and then students are exposed to the rigorous computerized problems that are aligned to the new SOLs. So in the PASS program, it is basically the teacher teaching in a traditional setting, and all these are research-based rigorous problems that align to the SRL, like released test items, and it exposes our students to that. So it's like a benchmark that we might create, but this program is mainly the teacher. The breakdown of the programs and success rates, and this were the divisions that have been using this for over 15 years, now the Core Program, if you complete 100% of the curriculum, it's a 92% chance that you will pass the SRL. If you complete 100% of the curriculum in TRACK, it is a 90% chance that you will pass the SRL. And if you saw Southampton and Petersburg, they were over 90%, and they implemented the program with fidelity. The PASS program, if you complete all of those lessons, it's 89% pass rate. And again, we chose to use the PASS program, just to expose our students who have already done well in the past on SOLs. Here's the part that most of the presentation is about. If you complete 80% of the curriculum, then the pass rate drops significantly to 75%. If you go under that 80%, it is likely you will fail the SRL. So when we talk about implementing a program to fidelity and research-based, you must finish the program if you expect to get the results that you're paying for. Just to show you, I don't sit around in a room and dream these things up or invent these things. We research everything, and blended learning, I believe Boil and I already talked about that, those are opportunities where you blend the best of your best with your teacher with computerized learning. In Houston, with 210,000 students, they're replacing the printed textbooks with laptops and digital textbooks, and I know that would cause a lot of heartburn to some people. Nashville Public Schools has eliminated textbooks for social studies at all grades, and K through 4 is their next transition into digital content. Chesterfield County, which is in Virginia, which is a forward-thinking county and does very well, has an innovative plan focused on three big ideas, and this is their strategic plan that they've released to the public. And the three big ideas is, one, blended learning, the best face-to-face instruction mixed with the latest digital technology, which is exactly what Cortez is. Project-based learning, to engage students in real-world problem-solving. I know we've all heard about project-based learning. And three, service learning, to make meaningful connections for students with their community. And we all do this, I would say Chase City and South Hill Elementary probably do the most service learning projects and do an outstanding job, and all of our schools are trying to do more and more of these. But here's Chesterfield County who does very, very well, and Mecklenburg is doing all three of these initiatives as well.
Chesterfield does Cortez math?
No, they do blended learning. They do other types of blended learning. The change from print books to digital counterparts isn't just to save money, it's rather to meet the kids where they are. The costs, basically, the cost to implement the program is $139,000, and then the lab staff, which I talked about, is, that's what they charge us, the $3,600 per month times, 10 months times five staff members, for 180. So you see, the majority of the cost is in personnel. This does align with other initiatives we're using. Next slide. ST Math, which we talked about earlier, is $46,000 per building. Rosetta Stone is $50,000. I Ready is $140,000. These programs also require extra staff to do, but we pay that extra staff in instructional aides, and we have people in the lab for Rosetta Stone that we pay out of our budget. So it doesn't make it look like it costs as much. The difference in Cortez is we pay Cortez for that, for those people, we don't hire those people. They hire them, and then we pay them. So it's still like they're our employees. So the prices for the programs are very similar and very aligned with other things that we are doing. How have we done implementing the program? I know I was asked this by some board members, we're paying a lot of money for this program, what are we doing? On September 15th, we received benchmark reports from Cortez, and benchmark reports means, are the students getting through the lessons where they should be, so that they can finish 100% of the lessons at the end of the semester or at the end of the year, depending when they take the SOLs? So this is not a test that they scored 51% pass, this is, are they meeting, are they getting through the curriculum? And the four-year recovery students in September, 0% were on benchmark at Bluestone High School. Algebra I, the four-year students, 1%. One out of 90 students was on benchmark. I put one out of 90 because that's alarming. If 89 students end up failing the Algebra I SRL, which is a verified credit form. Geometry, full year was 51%. At Parkview, Algebra I, one semester recovery was at 29%. The Algebra I full year was at 12, and Geometry full year was at 41. At that point, I had a meeting with executive administration and asked why we aren't able to implement this program when other counties are able to. From that, they had teacher meetings, and the November 15th report shows a lot of gains, still not where we need to be, because if you listen to earlier the data, 100% completion means you're gonna get 92% pass rate. 80 means you're gonna get 75. Anything below that, you're probably gonna fail. So these are, we're still not out of the woods, but we will be presenting plans later how to get there.
That's completing the modules in Cortez?
Yes, it's completing all the lessons in Cortez.
So it doesn't matter what they score on the lessons, but as long as they complete the lessons?
No, they're mastery lessons, so they have to complete them to mastery.
Does that mean a certain score?
Yes.
What score is that?
I believe it's 70%.
So they have to make 70 to complete to be considered mastery?
Right, to move on.
One question, does it have anything, these are geared to grade levels, would it have anything to do with the children not being able to read at grade level, and not being able to understand the text of the math problems?
Well, some- Well, some severe students, yes, but just like the other counties in Petersburg and Southampton, they have students that are not reading on grade level that are passing this program if they finish the lessons. So it really is research-based input-output. With all of the data in here, it takes all of those variables together, and all students in this program, if you do a hundred percent, this is what you're going to likely get. And then anything less than that, you're going to get less results. So for eighty, eight percent, I mean, for eight percent of the population, it may not work.
And who else is using Cortez besides Petersburg and Southampton?
I'd have to get you a list. At the beginning of Cortez, there was York County, Hanover County. I'd have to get you the full list.
Well, they're not using it now.
I don't know that.
And Southampton and Petersburg did a palette program, I believe.
Yes, they started with that.
Are they still using it?
I know Southampton is full implementation, elementary through high school, and they are fully accredited in math. Then the middle school students, in September fifteenth, I do not have the core data from September fifteenth, but currently in core, fifty-six percent of the students are in track at Bluestone Middle and eighty-five percent at Parkview Middle. And you'll see in seventh, sixth and seventh grade at both middle schools have made tremendous gains since September fifteenth implementing the program, and those teachers have worked tremendously hard to get there. Now, results. We have results already from first semester. And again, this is where data doesn't lie. In Algebra One recovery students, these are students who have failed once or twice prior to this year. They went through the track program. And in Bluestone High School, we had seven out of sixteen students pass, forty-three percent pass rate. Fifty percent of the students were at benchmark, and I put eighty percent. None of them were at a hundred percent, finished in the curriculum. They were at eighty percent, and that was only fifty percent of them were at eighty. Of those eight that completed or were within the eighty percent, five out of the eight passed for sixty-two percent pass rate, which is in line with what Cortez says. If you finish the curriculum, you have a very good chance of passing. Of the eight that did not complete, two passed and four can expedite, or twenty-five percent. So again, the data is very clear. If you don't finish the curriculum, it's likely you will not pass. Five out of eight compared to the two out of eight. Now, this is where we're trying to be transparent. I could have shown you a report next month when we show you all of the midterm SOLs. This is going to show up as seven out of seven for this class because it's a retake. So once you fail the test, they don't let you fail it again and count against the school. So even though only seven out of sixteen passed, it's going to show up as seven out of seven, which is a hundred percent, which looks great. And it's going to add to help to get the school accredited, but this is where I don't care. And here's where we're hurting children because there's nine students or eight students that we did not expose to the curriculum, and they failed the test. And it is our job and responsibility to expose them to that curriculum that we're paying for. And when we don't, we know they'll probably fail, and we didn't do our job, and they failed. And it's a verified credit. They won't walk across that stage without passing that.
Now, some kids are in the same class, but some aren't keeping on pace. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
So if the kids are in the same class and some aren't keeping it on pace, why are they not keeping on pace?
Well, when we got to the first benchmark and I asked that question, we got a time on task report, and that's later in my presentation, and we'll get to that, but I'll answer it now. The teachers were not spending two days a week in the lab like the program asked for the full ninety minutes. So if you can't, if you're not going to spend the time, the forty percent in there, they're not going to finish it. And now there are students, even since, and in other counties where this is implemented, where some students are going to struggle, and they can't do a lesson in sixty minutes, or they can't do a lesson in ninety minutes. So some of them come before and out to school, or they get pulled out of electives, and they do what they have to do to get on track.
So even if the teachers are putting them in the lab, those kids can't complete it, for whatever reason, in that timeframe?
There are some that may not, yes. Very few. The average, the average student can complete a lesson in sixty minutes, and they have ninety minutes.
That's the average student?
Right.
Okay.
And again, we have the same type of students in Southampton. Our students aren't different. The, I mean, our students can do just as well as Southampton's students. And to say that they can't because they may have a reading gap or whatever, I don't know if you can say Southampton's students don't have any reading gaps or there ain't any students that fall in that gap. What Southampton does and what schools do that use this program, they know one thing. If you get a hundred percent of the lessons done, you got a ninety-two percent chance. And so they make sure their students get there, and that is what we should be doing.
I guess for me, when you talk about data, we have a lot of schools in Virginia, and the only one I keep hearing about is Southampton. And Chesterfield County, usually they're innovative, they're innovative, they're moving forward in all these different programs in Chesterfield County, but they're not using it. I would just like to see what are the top schools in Virginia doing, and are they doing Cortez? Southampton's just one school of many down fifty-eighth. But I would just like to get a, more of a data pool besides one school.
Well, we did that research, Mr. Sturtevant, and many schools do traditional methods, and many schools do not have the same demographics as our students. Southampton does have similar demographics, and that's who we research. And again, they have over a hundred thousand data points in Cortez that says, if you finish a hundred percent of the curriculum, you'll get a ninety-two. It's pretty good bang for your buck when in the traditional setting, if you want to pull up the scores in the traditional setting, with students who have failed for two years in a row in middle school, have twenty-six percent pass rate and forty percent pass rate, I want our students to get a ninety-two percent pass rate and get a verified credit.
So do I.
And I asked, and I asked every school, Mr. Sturtevant, and every one of those teachers within those schools, research and bring me something that will get us there, and the answer was Cortez.
Is Cortez state-specific? I know it's all over the nation, but do they cater?
It is state-specific. It was made just for the state of Virginia.
And that's based on our SOLs?
That's based on the SOLs, yes, sir.
You can go to the DOE website. It's right on the DOE website. It says it's a scientifically-based evidence of effectiveness. It says the effectiveness is justified based on scientific research that involves the application of rigorous, systematic, and objective procedures to obtain reliable and valid knowledge on the instructional intervention. It says its effectiveness in improving student achievement has been demonstrated in Virginia and is based on an effective research-based strategy. Gains in student achievement on Virginia Standard of Learning tests have been sustained over time. So the DOE has done the research for us also, so it's on their site.
With Cortez, I just want to be clear. Is Cortez based on our SOLs, and are our kids just testing prep tests based on our SOLs throughout the year so that they can pass SOLs?
No, sir.
Okay.
They, the curriculum locks them through, they take notes from the curriculum in their notebooks. They do breakout with the teacher, where the teacher teaches the SOL. It's a blended curriculum. And so the computer exposes them to lessons in a different way that the teacher might not say. Then they do take SOL rigorous questions that are related, and they get harder as they finish a certain strand or SOL.
So it's focused?
The same thing we ask our teachers to do in the classroom. We ask them to align their curriculum and make sure your tests are aligned to that curriculum and more rigorous.
I know I've heard we don't teach to the test, but it seems almost like so Cortez is basing their modules on the SOL test. And as you prep through their system, then you're going to score well on the test. Everything seems to revolve around scoring well on the test.
Well, we're very happy that Cortez aligned their curriculum. That is what we're trying to do with the entire division for math, reading, history, and science. And what we just trained our teachers on is to go through the SOLs, make sure your lesson plans are aligned with the SOLs, then make sure you teach the same way that you wrote your lesson plans, and then make sure your assessments or your tests that you make are aligned to the SOLs. So if we're teaching to the SOLs, yeah, you're teaching to the curriculum that Virginia has declared as relevant for our students. So absolutely.
In years past, we didn't do that as far as have a curriculum built based on, I think, unpacking and all of that. We didn't do that years past, did we?
We did, probably. When the first SOLs came out, that procedure is exactly what school systems across Virginia did. They unpacked the SOLs, they aligned it, and they did a lot of drill and kill. The old SOLs were a lot of drill and kill. And the difference now, and why it's a little harder for our teachers, is it's a lot more rigorous. So the questions and assessments are a lot more rigorous.
And Cortez is not drill and kill?
No. Their questions, by the time they get to the end of it, are the rigorous questions that students will be exposed to on the SOLs.
I have one, one question. My concern is, can they do well after they get out of high school? And I talk to parents and their children go to college, and the first thing the parent tells me is, child's having a hard time, they're not prepared. And is that, is there anything we can do to fix it, other than?
Well, that's what we're trying to do. If you've talked to students and parents who have graduated from this school, they haven't graduated using Cortez. So that means they graduated with, our teacher's giving them instruction in math, and you're saying they can't do well in college.
So five, so five years from now, when we find out they're still failing, and they've spent three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, is that going to be justifiable? That's all I'm asking. I mean...
Oh, will we be able to? It depends on the, on the students. Only about thirty percent of our students go on to college, and this program, the PASS program, which is the least restrictive, where the teachers do most of the work, is for kids who have already done well. So for those students, they're really being taught by the teacher. Mostly what Cortez is for is the students who have not done well, and we have demonstrated gaps, and so we're trying to catch those gaps up. So are those students going to go on to college and do something in math? Probably not. They probably weren't to begin with.
But we're at one school, we're using PASS and one not using?
We're using, we're using it depending on the student. So it's individualized instruction based on the students. All right. To go on, in geometry at Bluestone High School, we had nine out of sixteen students pass for a fifty-six percent pass rate. This was the PASS program, one semester. Unfortunately, these students were not exposed to four strands in the PASS program. I don't, I'm still waiting for an answer for why these students were not exposed. And remember, the PASS program is the full curriculum taught by the teacher and only the computer lessons at the end of each unit. So this, the PASS program, is really teacher-driven, and those are just like taking benchmarks. Six of the students can expedite. Four students were retakes, so the percentage that will be reported is sixty-nine percent pass rate. Bluestone High School results this year, Algebra Two, with the PASS program, we had twenty-three students in it, and we had twenty-three students pass for a hundred percent. And for these particular students, they all finished the PASS curriculum. Again, data does not lie. Parkview High School results this year, Algebra One recovery students, only six of the twenty-five students passed for a twenty-four percent pass rate. These are, again, students that had failed previously. Thirty-two percent of the students were at benchmark, again, only at the eighty percent mark. Of the eight that completed, four passed, or fifty percent of them. Of the seventeen that did not complete it, only two passed, or eleven percent pass rate. And again, this will show up as four for four. Again, what data demonstrates is if you finish the curriculum, you have a very good chance of passing. If you don't, you're basically going to fail. Results this year in geometry recovery, twelve out of thirty-two students passed, fifty-six percent of the students were at benchmark. Of the nineteen that completed, ten passed. Of the fifteen that did not, only two passed. You can see the trend here. This will show up as ten for ten, which is going to help our schools get accredited, but it sure does not help those students walk across the stage. Parkview High School results this year, geometry, one semester pass. Again, this is the program where the teacher teaches all of the SOLs in a traditional format, and the students just go through the PASS program at the end of each strand. We had thirty-two out of forty-four students pass, or a seventy-two percent pass rate. All of these students did finish their curriculum, and this is an increase from last year in geometry of thirty-one percent to seventy-two. So we're very pleased, although we'd like to see it a little higher. The timeline, I was asking, what, what happened? You know, why are we spending this money? Where are we, why is it not being implemented? September fifteenth, I shared with you before, the first benchmark demonstrated that two days on the computer time on task was not being implemented. On October ninth and tenth, we had teacher meetings. At the end of October, the executive administration informed me we were back on track, and then we were following the program with fidelity. Then November tenth, at an executive administrative meeting, I was informed that all the high school benchmark data for all subjects did not look good. This alarmed me that at November tenth, where the SOLs are on the corner, that we might be in trouble. On November fifteenth, I received an email with the new benchmark results, and we have made progress. You've seen that data up there. We've made significant progress, and especially at the middle school level, there's been a very concerted effort there to, like I said, give up planning periods, stay after school and get our kids where they need to be. And in the middle school, they're year-long, so we feel like we have time to help. And, but for our semester students in one semester, it's too late for them. And a lot of them can expedite and take it again, and hopefully we can remediate and try to help them. On November twenty-fifth, I received an email from the president of Cortez that stated the following. "Repeatedly, we have directed your instructional leadership to abbreviate the curriculum for your one semester students. Obviously, this compromises the success of the students. If they do not complete at least eighty percent of the curriculum, they will likely fail. For this program to produce the results you expect, it must be implemented and operated with fidelity. I believe your students have a real opportunity to be successful if they receive the appropriate instruction. Please let me know what we can do to salvage these situations." Both high schools have the poorest benchmark results for track in our entire program supporting more than ten thousand students. As a result of this email, I requested to see all the instructional support plans for our teachers who are having trouble implementing this, and I found that there were no instructional support plans in place for any of our teachers for implementing the program. To move forward, to plan to ensure that we do have proper implementation, as superintendent of schools, I take full responsibility for our students and the poor implementation of the program and the lack of instructional support plans for our teachers. We had a plan to implement Cortez and support our teachers, but you must monitor this plan, and you must implement the plan with fidelity to get increase in results. We let down our students who desperately needed a verified math credit by not fully implementing the program. That is why I have reorganized. I will present a full plan of how we will support teachers to better implement the program in January. Additionally, I'll be presenting a plan that the instructional team is creating with principals, and we'll be discussing that actually starting tomorrow, about how to do what we've been trained to do, and was the last training session we had for teachers, that you have to unpack the SOLs, and you have to do the lesson plans. We need to give feedback on those lesson plans, then we need to follow up in the classroom, give feedback on how it was delivered, and then we need to give feedback on the assessment. And we have a plan in place that, or we will have a plan in place, that will ensure that we support our teachers in doing that. Because it's not easy. No one's an expert at this, none of the principals, none of the executive administration is an expert at doing this. So we'll have a plan to how we can spot-check each other so that we're giving good advice unpacking all curriculum for all of our students as we move forward. I've said this since the day I came here, I will always put children first. I would like to say that our math teachers have improved on time on task and the implementation of the program, and it is our job to... the program, and it is our job to support them in the implementation. I know some still do not like the program, but they have embraced the goal of setting, goal of getting all students through their curriculum. In addition, they've worked through their planning period, and I've said this several times tonight. It's also our job as educators to support children first and not adults. The data speaks loud and clear over the last few years with a little success with math, with the traditional method for students with gaps in math. This is not critical of our teachers. I've said this in teacher meetings with math teachers. I'm not being critical of our math teachers. We have kids coming with gaps that have failed math, maybe in elementary school and middle school, and they've had trouble with math throughout their career. We have to find a solution for them so that they can graduate. And this is a supplemental program that will hopefully help them. Just leaving it alone and not doing anything, you can look at our scores in the high school over the last few years, there's not a significant change. And we have to make sure our students can graduate. This is a great blended learning opportunity. When we visited Southampton, we spoke to students. And I spoke to one young lady, said, "I hate math, and I hate this program." And she told me that she passed her Algebra I SOL, so she knows the programs works, and that's why she was gonna work hard in geometry. And she was sitting there with her computer out, and she was sitting there like this, and doing it, and you could tell she wasn't real happy about being on it. But she's gonna graduate. And no, she's not gonna go to college for math, but hopefully she'll have a bright career doing something that she enjoys. So finally, the question is, really for the board and for the community, change is inevitable. I don't know why this community hasn't understood that sometimes, but the thing that is optional is progress. Change is gonna happen in everything we do. You need to decide, progress is optional. What do you want for our children? Are we gonna support them and implement the programs that we pay for, or is it optional? And if it's optional, and we as adults give that signal to our teachers and our children that it's optional, you see what can happen to the results. Are there any questions?
Yes. This is Cortez-driven. So when Cortez sends you a report back, you take that report, then you go to the administrative teams at the different schools, and you ask them about their plans and about time on task.
Yes, the instructional team does that.
The instructional team does that.
All right.
Now, your background is in math, and you say traditional education isn't necessarily working with math, but Cortez, the way they have it set up, we're getting good results.
Mm-hmm.
My question to you is, is this your long-term goal, as far as in Mecklenburg County, Cortez math being the driving force to get our kids to pass the SOLs?
Well, I can, I can answer that as no, and I can answer that as, I've used Cortez in Cumberland County. I used it in Cumberland County when we had one of the lowest pay scales around, and we had a hard time finding any math teachers. So that is why we researched it that time and went with that. And over the years, as we got better and better, and we got our pay scale up, and we attracted some of the best and brightest straight out of college, and we got our teachers trained over time, because teachers still have to teach. It's not just their computer. Teachers still have to have a focused lesson. But what the computer does is allow a teacher who may need more training, the kids are being exposed to the computer lessons while they're developing and they're getting better at their curriculum. So it helps in that. So over time, what I'd love to see is to do away with it completely, which we did. We did in Cumberland except for, I think, remediation at the elementary, and that was it. So over time, I don't wanna use it. But I've also said, I treat every kid in this system like my own child. I want what I want for my own child. I want my own child to go to college. I want every kid in this system to have the chance to go to college. That doesn't mean they have to go, but to get them in position to have that opportunity, which means they have to get an advanced diploma and get through algebra, geometry, and Algebra II. My child went through Cortez. My child was not harmed by it. My child is in the STEM program, and is gonna graduate this year in the STEM program, which is math and science, and go on to college. So obviously, the exposure to Cortez did not hurt my child, and many other, and many other children who have been exposed through the years.
I don't think we said it hurt the program. I think every board member as well would like the best for all of our kids. My question is, with Cortez math, how long do you envision we're gonna use this program while our teachers are getting trained to be more effective teachers?
As long as we have to.
Who's gonna train the teachers? As you said, if they're not effective right now, what training is gonna be put in place for that?
Well, we already said what we were doing. Unpacking the curriculum, reviewing how they teach it, all of that. We're already doing it.
And...
And it's gonna take time, just like this system took 10 years to get fully accredited with the old SOL. I'm hoping it doesn't take 10 years. Can I ask the board a question?
Go ahead.
And you don't have to answer, but maybe you can come back later. I'd like to know why the board has never asked me to make a presentation on iReady, which is brand-new, its research base is brand-new, and it's $139,000, and some of the other programs we have done. It seems like, because I use this program in Cumberland, it's under great scrutiny. You know what? I love my kids in Cumberland, and I use that program for them because I wanted those kids to be successful. I brought Cortez here because I didn't see another answer. No one in this faculty or staff brought me an answer. So I use research and want the best for these kids here. And if I'm gonna be scrutinized for that, so be it. I'll stand behind this decision 100%, because data doesn't lie. You can have an opinion about whatever you want, but data doesn't lie.
All right. I'll answer your question. The iReady program, a lot of teachers were skeptical, especially people that had seniors, but they like it because it pinpoints their weaknesses in the reading. The Cortez math, I don't think it's so much that you brought the program here, is that the teachers say that the reading level is far above the level of the kids that are trying to do the program. That's, they like the iReady program.
My answer to that is, those same kids who may have trouble reading have to take that SOL, which is the same reading level, and they have to pass it. So am I gonna dumb down instruction for kids who can't read as well? No, I'm gonna try to have a higher expectation and expose them to something, and get them to that point where they can read. That's our job.
Yeah.
And iReady, I'll tell you, I'm skeptical because it's brand-new, and I haven't seen all the data for it. And I will tell you, some systems who use it have overused it as its, as a full curriculum. And you're right, it identifies specific problems, and then you can help teach the students. If you use that as a full curriculum, it can be a disaster. And I have that knowledge from a few of my colleagues who have used it in that way. So all of these things have to be used the way they were designed, which is the administrator's job, principal's job, and teacher's job to make sure things are implemented the way the research says, and not by opinion or what they think. And because they weren't involved in designing it. And there's a lot of programs we have in here that SD math. I can't tell you much about it, but that's research-based, and it's one of the top five in the nation. Can I fully explain it? And I will tell you, I am a math major, and when I had Cortez brought to me in Cumberland County as a principal, I was opposed to a lot of it, for the same reason some of our teachers were skeptical, because I thought as a math teacher, I can teach it better than a computer. And that was like 15, probably 20 years ago. I'm getting old. And, but you know what? You have to have an open mind to change, and you have to be willing to look at it and see what you get. And what we got were great results. And I'm not gonna argue with that, even though there's still some things I don't agree with it. And I went into the classroom at Parkview Middle School for six weeks with Laura Pitter because we had a teacher out, and I taught Cortez math. So now, and I learned a lot over the six weeks of how to implement it. And it's not easy. And our teachers, my hat's off to them. It's difficult. You've got designed lessons that you're gonna go do, you gotta keep track of where your kids are on the computer. It's not an easy job. But it is our job to make sure our kids have that opportunity.
Do you mind telling us what your SRLs are worth?
They're gonna be given in the spring. And I hope my six weeks had a great impact, and I hope I didn't do any damage.
All right.
Then you need to ask Ms. Connor if I did any damage.
The lab managers, we have lab managers in iReady as well as Rosetta Stone?
For Rosetta Stone, yes, we have designated lab administrators. And then for the other programs, there's aides, instructional aides that are assigned to do different things in different buildings. It's all done different ways in different buildings.
So it's based on the building?
Yes.
All right. My next question is, I know you mentioned you asked why the board hasn't asked for you to do a presentation. How long have we been using Cortez?
How long have we?
Yes.
We used it in that school year. At the end of last school year, we tried a last-ditch effort to use it for a few weeks before the SOLs, because our benchmarks were horrible. And then we started this full implementation, six, seven, and eight in the middle school this year, and Algebra I, geometry, and some Algebra II at the high school this year.
And this is the first presentation you've given us?
No, I've talked about Cortez before. This is the first big formal presentation with data.
Yeah, just to follow up, I, you know, as a board member, if you're recommending that we use these programs, I don't think we necessarily have to ask you to do a presentation. I think you could present it to us in advance before we ask. If we have to ask, then we've gone too far. So it's not so much of a point as to why we haven't asked about iReady or Rosetta Stone. I'm glad you did a program. I'm glad you showed us some data. The main thing is student achievement. Am I sold on Cortez? No. I hope that the kids can benefit from it. I do want more data from other school divisions who are using Cortez. Southampton County, very familiar with Peanut District, very familiar with them. But what about the other innovative school divisions in our state? What about the other school divisions in our region? Southampton, Southampton, Petersburg, Petersburg. If you can bring more school divisions who are using Cortez the way we're using it, I would like to see that data as well.
I would like to say, as you saw, Chesterfield, which basically has the same strategic plan and same initiatives we have, Cortez is a blended learning environment. It is not something, the way we're using it right now is for remediation. Yes, we do have some students who are accelerating through the program, and have, in the middle schools, have already finished, like, all of sixth grade already, all of seventh grade already in a semester. But the main reason we put Cortez in is to remediate. So these innovative places that are not in the point of remediation, they're not using it. But I will give you a full list of everyone who's using it, and get you why they're using it. And it's probably the same purpose, because in the traditional setting, the kids were not producing the results, so we had to do something to get the kids to pass an SOL test and graduate.
Okay.
Sure. Next on the agenda is the Virginia School Board Policy Section Instruction.
Okay, so for this month, for Read is VSBA Policy Section I, Instruction. Of course, it's all about things, topics that include instructional goals, programs for gifted education, programs for students with disabilities, parental involvement, textbook adoption, class size, calendar days, graduation requirements, SOL testing, alternative learning, remediation, summer school, and other topics related directly with student instruction. This section will replace Section 6 of our current policy. Please read these policies prior to the vote in January. If you have any questions or concerns, you can contact my office. Thank you.
Ms. Pitter?
Yes?
Does the VSBA policy have a whistleblower policy anywhere?
I'll have to look and see. I can go back in the notebook, but I have it in my office.
Because I know that it had come up before, that we should implement a whistleblower policy to protect our staff or anyone else who wants to speak out. And if VSBA has that, I think we should implement it. If they don't have it, hopefully the board can discuss getting that put in place.
I can have an answer for you, and either email you, or call you, or tell you at the next meeting, if we have.
Yes, thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
There's one in school life.
Would that be a caution to the other guys about the issue?
Um, it's on Angela.
I was gonna write that manual last year. That was more of a request that we could add to the manual.
I think we'll wait for Ms. Pitter's report back for that. But I think what you'll find the answer from VSBA is that there are grievance policies and harassment policies, and all of those are in place for, that would pertain to that subject. But we'll get a definitive answer for you.
Thank you.
Ms. Connor, you're up next.
All right. Good evening, Board. Dr. Thornton, I am here to present the results of RFQ 2015-1001. It was RFQ for our employee benefits administrators. I issued and advertised beginning October the 22nd. We received the answers in on the 12th of November and opened them on the 13th. We have since held interviews with three different companies, and I have in your executive content attached to the analysis of our, of the bids. It was a, it was a close race. The three that we interviewed were Mark III. They are a brokerage firm that responded. They were out of Charlotte, North Carolina. Digital Benefits Advisors. We currently use digital benefits. The third company was RCMND, and they, they hailed from, they did, they did business all Virginia, North Carolina, Maryland. They're a national company, I do believe.
Okay.
And these are the folks, they help us with compliance, they help us with our open enrollment, they help us with, they actually issue the RFPs and whatnot when we're doing bids on They were one of them, yes, digital. A different, yes. And we graded them. There were three of us on the team. We had six points that were listed in the RFQ with the weighted percentage that they would be given. And the three of us, we interviewed them, and then we individually scored, and I put it into the analysis here. it into the analysis here, and, and this is what we ended up with. They're, they're both very, well, they were all very reputable firms.
Who was on the interview team?
Myself, Laura Pitterd, and Heather Tuck. When I came, there, you know, had been some question, who's supposed to be handling benefits? And, and truly, it is, it's an HR issue. And, and then my department in finance does the mechanics. We do the payroll, we, we, we make sure it gets done. So Laura has taken the lead and is trying to get her department up where they should be on benefits and is doing a great job.
Attached in your board packet is a funding resolution of which school boards are being asked across the state to adopt. V S B A and VAS are joining in this effort to amplify our voices to the General Assembly about our need for them to invest appropriately in public education. We are presenting information and asking for adoption of the resolution tonight, and the resolution is in your packet. Yes. Oh, I don't, no, VAS is the Virginia Association of Schools Superintendent, yes. I would hope they would support it, because then they'd be supporting more money as well.
If not, Ms. Mills, you're next on the agenda.
Good evening, Dr. Thornton and school board members. Unfortunately, Charles could not be here tonight. He was feeling under the weather, so here I go. All right. First, I want to congratulate all the people that got recognized tonight, and I thoroughly enjoyed the presentation of chickens. And I will now do a report on our liaison trip. Charles, Doug, Desta, and myself had a wonderful opportunity to attend the V S B A conference in Williamsburg, Virginia last month. We learned so many things and met so many people, especially the Fairfax and Goochian liaisons. There were about fifty liaisons there. Our speaker was Steve Barterich from Southern Virginia University. What we had to do was to work in small groups to discuss possible school board situations and current issues in education. And I wanted to read one of the, one of the situations that they gave us. Cody Schuffett is the star of our back of your high school football team. He has been on varsity team since ninth grade and is currently in his senior year. He took your team to the state tournament last year, and the team has been projected to go to the championship this season. This year, Cody's grades have been sliding and on the verge of making him ineligible to play football. Now, a lawyer director of your school has brought up his eligibility issues to the principal for the potential returns a deaf ear. Now, a lawyer director has now come before the school board to discuss the star's grades and eligibility. How do you think the school board should react? So we all came up to have a closed meeting due to confidentiality of the student, possibly talk to the guidance council to seek possible solutions, and still follow the Virginia High School guidelines for eligibility. Also, we pointed out that he is a student athlete and that education comes first over sports. We also had a line to process on how to create a school board policy. Also, the four of us brought in architecture there from Copeland Mac, and we had a task to put blocks together on a visual map to build a new school. For example, we arranged to put an art wall and a fine arts center together. We put the administration in the hall, and on the other side, we put the STEM and other classes together. Speaking for all of us, we thoroughly enjoyed the opportunity to go, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mills.
But I say something. I hope one day to see her on the Golf Channel on Sunday. I think that can happen. And since Charles is not here tonight, I go to church with Charles, and it was announced that he's been accepted to V A and I, and he'll be going to Virginia Military Institute. And he told us when he came up here the first night that he wanted a, a future in the military, and it seems like he's on the right track and he's going that way. And I just, since, since he's not here tonight, I thought we should recognize him for that.
Let's show that we're not in public comments. Next thing on the agenda is the action items. Approval of the minutes for this November. Can I get a motion? Have a second? All in favor? Any discussion members? All opposed? Next thing on the agenda is the paying of the bills. Bill? Okay. Any discussion or question? Oh, give me a second. Discussion.
Question. We have one bill after five thousand dollars for concrete wall, whether we put it aside or off there? Lacrosse Elementary.
Are we doing that at all the schools?
Not, that was not in the plan, Lacrosse. I think we did it actually at all of the elementaries, if I'm not mistaken. That was the last one.
Is that five thousand, is that included, found free, is that just late?
That was the, the whole bill.
We incorporated fifteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars for library furniture. Is that going to library?
Yes, sir, Parkview Middle School. We did that back in August, and I'm not sure, we did not receive the invoice until November. But that was an August project that we, we did and, and I think talked about back in the summer. It's the library at Parkview Middle School.
And I did visit the Parkview Middle School, and there's good looking furniture in there.
I, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
NS, in the National School Board, three thousand?
Yes, sir, ma'am, that's the arrangements for the convention, I believe, the, the one in March, the big one.
Where are we going this year?
I don't know.
Nashville.
Nashville.
He's going from Sunday to drive. I'm not sure if it's Sunday. So the plane flight tickets, do we buy them or not for that?
I think they're, most everybody's planning to drive, but, but Sharon is making those arrangements. Okay.
See, you answered them all, but there was a, a bill that turned out, where we paid people five thousand dollars. That was to reimburse them when they paid for the water. They paid the people.
Right, correct. It was a, a timing issue.
We had the same thing, we had to build a facility December. And we bought a new sixteen thousand dollars furniture. I'm going to set up another lawn tractor after this year.
To clarify, that lawn tractor, it is not only the lawn tractor, it includes a front loader, a sixty inch cutting deck, a tiller, and a trailer for, for the unit. And it's for the maintenance, mainly maintenance of athletic fields, although with it being transportable, we'll be able to use it for whatever we need.
Did we buy a trailer with it?
Yes, sir, it's part of the, it's part of it.
We've been trying to get that done for ten years, so I'm glad to see it finally happen.
And that's for use of both schools?
Any school that needs it, really. We, we hope to get a lot of use out of it with all the different things that it has on it.
I do have a question on that, though. Why is it coming out of instructional money and not maintenance and operation?
Well, we really felt like it was an athletic expense, and that other supplemental category in instruction is for athletics. We've done fences at different ball fields and, and whatever needs. Part of that is appropriated to the different schools for the athletic directors to spend. And then we keep a little bit for us to make decisions, and this is what the committee asked for this year.
Yeah, I was going to say, this came from the, the Athletic Committee with both athletic directors. I think Ed Crowe is the chair of that. And the need was for a tractor at Bluestone Mill and Bluestone High School to share. South Hill, the town uses their tractor to help Parkview Mill and High, so it's long overdue. I know it's been, we've tried to get it for a while, and I'm glad we finally got it for the Athletic Departments.
I was going to add, our goal is to purchase another one next school year, so we do have one located on both ends of the county, so that we don't have to travel as far with it.
And when is the pickup date for those?
Well, I hope to do tomorrow. I've had to get the check approved. Mr. Livingston is on call to hopefully go get it tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
Has the motion, is second, can I get a vote to approve? All in favor? Oppose?
I'm abstaining.
You don't know what the reason is, whether I'm a square or a square.
Four, four. Yes.
Next thing on the agenda is personnel. Can I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Next subject is the Parkview High School, Bluestone High School, and Bluestone Mill School overnight trips.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Next on the agenda is the Virginia School Board Association Policy Section Personnel. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Next on the agenda is the Virginia School Board Association Resolution Concerning the Funding of Public School Education in Virginia. Can I have a motion? Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I have a resolution, I need you all to sign for your leave here tonight.
No, it didn't pass.
Oh, it's three three, okay. You can come back in January.
Sorry to have voted on.
It already does.
All right, the next thing on the agenda is, does need signature in the absence of superintendent.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? And the next thing on the agenda is the Employees Benefit Administration. Can I get a motion? Can I have a second? Can I get them to approve? All in favor? There's an item on the Education Committee Report, I'm going to hold it over until January. I'll let Ms. Towne present that in January. And at this time, comments from the board members.
One thing to add on to my report. In the month of November, the Bluestone Student Council Association started a schoolwide recycling program for mixed paper. The S C A members who helped start this program include Summer Fink, Joshua Rawson, Hank Dunn, Karen Linhardt, Donna Barksdale, Enzane Towns. And I can personally say that these things that they did, they went all out, their boxes, and they put like a ring to look like a basketball, because you know kids, they like to throw things across the room. So they did that, and it's in every classroom, and it's very, it's helped so much with recycling in our school. And I wish everybody a happy holiday and happy new year, and that's it.
I really enjoyed the projects and the kids tonight. I hope we can continue to focus on project-based learning, blended learning, keep our county moving towards the 21st century. I know I'm going to try to concentrate all my efforts on trying to get things accomplished for our kids. I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. It's such a joy to see the young children performing and to know that nothing else can make its own move. I hope that in New Year, that we will be more positive about the fact that we are here by ourselves and less the joy of it all. I wish all of you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
I only have one issue. I'm going to bring up the, and it's about two or three emails that we've gotten stating the fact that, that Superintendent seems to be working under a hostile working environment.
Mrs. Ever, that is personnel and I don't.
That's not personnel, sir. Here's a, here's an email that I got, and I'm reading it. Do you mind, sir?
But you're still, this part of Dr. Thornton's contract, and I would assure you that.
We haven't seen a contract.
I hadn't seen a contract.
You want to read it?
If it's about me, anything in personnel.
This is person, this is, this is, this is personnel? I got an email, did you get one?
No, I said, anything you discuss about me that's personnel related, you can not do in public. If you want to go down that road.
Go ahead.
Well, don't send any more emails.
Mrs. Durbin?
Mrs. Bullock, I don't have anything.
I would like to say Merry Christmas, everybody, and also thank Ms. Shawes for inviting me up for the Christmas program. It was wonderful. And also, I am trying, going to try to get to Clarksville to see the chickens.
Well, I guess the lay's mean.
I just want to state at the beginning of the meeting, an allegation made against me about comments I made at the Virginia School Board Association. I read those comments in reference to the general public of school board members, that our job as school board members is for the kids, and we take the politics out. I'll say it again. We do not want to have politics in the board. We want to do what's right for our children. And I, and I stand by my words, and I was not talking about McHenry County School Board, but evidently, you know, the way we carry on here, it could be talked about. Because I get tired of every Tuesday and every Friday sending stuff in the newspaper about how we carry on at our meetings. I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Adjourn.